I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Gentlemen.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Weigat.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wigginton.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
All sixteen are present. Roll call of Department Heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Poor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre. City Engineer Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Human Resource Director Sherry Faber.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation W. Bellville.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Waste Water Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill. Director of Library Leander Spearman.
Ken Vaughn is excused. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're able, if you'd please stand and join me for the pledge.
(inaudible)
we're trying to improve for the clerk and those who listen to the tapes for the minutes. We've got to speak into the microphones like that. And likewise, when we do call public up if someone has something to say, please come to that microphone in the center, give your name, and speak into the microphone. Also, just for, it's a rainy night, I don't think it's a stormy night, but if we had any bad weather where we had to seek shelter, we've got a number of policemen here tonight. They would guide you across the lobby to the basement steps to go downstairs for a safe place in case we had to go seek cover. If we ever had a fire or smoke, unfortunately, we'd ask that you carefully leave the building. And we asked that we would try to meet in front of the courthouse sign just so we can kind of check and see if the people you came with are all accounted for. So that's our emergency procedures. At this time, we have no public hearing this evening, so I will open public participation. Wait until I recognize you when you raise your hand and then we'll begin. I will just say this. We've had two rounds of pretty intensive public participation about the fee increases. If somebody's got some information on behalf of the whole group, I mean, we've had some pretty lengthy public participations, but we certainly want to hear anything new, any new comments, and anything that can be added that would help the Aldermen in any way, shape, or form. But I'm kind of hoping that we don't have to go the whole hour of public participation like we did on the one evening, maybe a little bit longer. That was the whole purpose of that meeting. So, I'm not telling you, I'm just tossing that out there. So, at this time, I open public participation. Hopefully, it's something pertaining with city business. Yes, sir?
Is this on? Okay. I didn't attend the last meeting. I did try to watch it online. And I noticed that the microphones are unable to pick up the Aldermen even when they were speaking a foot in front of the microphone. I have a little thirty-dollar MP3 recorder that can pick it up just fine from twenty-five feet away. So, either you don't know how to use the equipment or you just don't want the public to be able to hear what the Aldermen are having to say. And I can guarantee what you just said didn't come out on the tape. So, next is Alderman Wigginton. Has commented that no sales tax is collected on Internet sales. This is just not true. I'm requesting that people stop lying and fear-mongering that the Internet is to blame for reduced sales tax revenue. Sales tax laws in effect well before the Internet have allowed for companies to forego collecting sales tax when shipping merchandise. It is this law that needs to be changed so that all sales are treated as if a customer walked into your shop and purchased the item. There'll be no sales that would be exempt from the local sales tax. And that's something that I know IML has looked at and something that has been pushed before. But the catalog sales before the Internet are the ones that have lobbied to have these laws out there. Once again, the mayor's mentioned a desire to establish a study of city finances when TIF III expires. I, having spent considerable amount of time studying TIFs and the taxing process, am offering to represent the average taxpayer on this committee. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone next? Yes, sir?
Barry Gregory. My wife Patty Gregory and I own Cree Hands Irish Pub in Banquet Center. I want to apologize for our counterproposal. It was late, but this is the busiest hospitality weekend of the year for all of us in our industry. And it was kind of eleventh hour, but likewise, we only found out about it a couple of weeks earlier. We finished the information late Thursday, early Friday morning. Contacted City Hall to try to get a response and didn't receive anything. So, then we send it out Friday evening sometime. After the board meeting three years ago, when we talked about this very same thing, we were told at that time that we'd be contacted and we'd sit down to discuss any issues before an increase. We believed that was what was going to happen at that time. And of course, it never did. Had a business license been implemented three years ago, as suggested right here when we talked last time, the city would have collected probably at a minimum six hundred thousand dollars in that time. If that was the case, we wouldn't be in this shape and addressing these issues presently. When I was doing the research in this, the only city I found in St. Clair County was Millstadt that does not have a business license. There may be others, I don't know. And the telephone calls I made, that's the only thing I could verify. So, I can't believe it's that hard to implement one here in Belleville. Again, three years ago, when we stood here and talked, we recommended an application fee of one thousand dollars. But no. How much would we have collected on that? Still, even at present, you're only proposing a seven hundred and fifty dollar at this time. Why are we putting the burden on the backs of the moms and pops' stores, the businesses here, that have been here for years? I've had mine twenty-one years. The wife and I put our hearts and souls into it. We're not even charging the Johnnygum lately what we're being charged for our liquor license. You talk about increased regulation, but charge only a proposed twenty dollars for a special event license? Seriously? Can you even handle the paperwork for twenty dollars? Package stores, major corporations who sell in one sale, what it takes us twenty-four to do? Now, who has the bigger workload in that? Where does the money go back in these corporations? Does it go back to St. Louis or some other city? Or does it get reinvested here in the community like in our businesses? We get requests, and I can speak for us personally, anywhere from five to nine donation requests every week. Every week. Not them. It is us who's giving back to the community. How much revenue's lost when the businesses downtown are pouring liquor without a license? Do we charge them? Do they have liquor liability insurance when they're holding these functions? Are dram shop insurance? Are they certified to pour alcohol the way we are? Are they certified as food handlers since they handle ice, which is a requirement by the state as well? We are. We pay both those licenses. And each and every employee has to be licensed to do that. We just held a Basset certification training last Monday. We had the Oktoberfest there. We did their training free of charge on our backs. You sanction these events without proper licenses to pour alcohol. But who do you think the liability's going to fall back on when the first incident occurs?
Okay, Barry, let's, I've given you way more than three minutes, so let's try to wrap up your comments.
Okay. Yesterday, there were eleven vending trucks on the West End. Nice, it was a very nice event. But how much sales tax revenue did we collect from each one of those trucks? Do we even know if they had a license? Did anyone check? Now, we're talking not only about this year's fee increases, but next year, without even talking about other revenue streams. And if you look at eleven A five, they're talking about a fifty-dollar annual fee beginning in 2019. Now, I don't know who can afford that annually, but soon, that's going to jump out of the ballpark. It says annually, the way it's written. I believe, or I wish, I had a dollar for every time somebody told me Saturday that I can't believe what the city is doing to you. I might be able to afford my fee increases then. But all the information about video gaming is updated a minimum of every six months because every time we have a change in any of our corporation's status, we have to make the Illinois Gaming Board notified within a timely manner. Every April, I update my city licenses. Every August, I update my state licensing. And each and every one of these holders do. The city of Belleville's collected over a million dollars in video gaming revenues and fees already without having to do much of anything except type a license and issue stickers. What regulation do we have here? The Illinois Gaming Board does all the regulation and inspections. So, why increase our fees? Because it is easy to do and we're here. We're not looking at other revenue sources. We've lost Fishers. We lost IHOP. We lost Red Onion, Marco's Unmain, and Shenanigans. While we've only increased the Hoffbrau House. If we have these increases the way they're proposed, we're going to lose more. It's short-sighted. You may gain some money in the short term, but when you lose these businesses, who's going to replace them and the revenue they have? Do what is fair. Do what is right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else that has anything to add to it? Yes, sir?
Thank you for letting me speak. Lonnie Casey on Night Moves over on I-9 McLentalk. Did a little research on this, the class liquor license that we had talked about last week. The liquor stores and the box stores, I mean, it's eighty percent of the sales. And the major, eighty percent of all of these wholesalers are telling me between seventy-five and eighty percent is what's going out their door, coming off their trucks. And the other twenty to twenty-five percent is going to the bars. Keep this in mind when you vote because, and then keep the fractions right because if you're going to look at, you can look at the, everybody can look at the gaming. But look at what we've got to give away to get that. I mean, you're welcome to come to my place anytime. I'll show you what I've got to do. You've got to constantly run specials. I mean, the machines are in a lot of, you can play everywhere. And the votes really not complaining too much right now anymore either. So, thanks for your time.
Okay. Okay. There's no one else? I'm going to close public participation. Was it Stuart? Oh, yes, sir. Didn't see your hand back there.
Stuart Leonard, Belleville. I'll try not to quote any ex-Democrat presidents this time. Speaking of the Hoffbrau House, I went out there April sixteenth and some girl, two girls were standing way on the other side of the room. And I knocked on the door and one of the girls come over and I said, "When this place going to open?" I said, "They was talking about early March." And she said, "No, I heard early April." And I said, "Well, what's going to be your function out here?" "I'm going to be a barmaid." Well, I got two barmaids standing around there here and supposedly, they ain't even going to open till mid-April. If they even open then. This is, that's getting to be a joke out there. And I don't think the tavern owners should be expected to fix the financial mess the Belleville leaders have gotten the city into. It's not tavern owners' fault. People and businesses are leaving the city. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name's Ron Bartlett and I own Centerfield Tavern. We've been in business for a year and a half. Today is the fourth time I have lowered the prices on my beer to get business. I'm charging a dollar fifty for a beer on Monday. You're not making any money on that. None of us are getting rich off these machines. Those machines keep us open. We could not survive without these machines. And you guys keep putting everything on our back. You know, spread it around. Tax all these businesses. You know, make them have a business license. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, hearing nothing else, we're going to close public participation. At this time, we're going to get into the regular portion of the meeting. Before I move on to the minutes, I just want to say, I don't think there's any teachers, faculty, or anyone here, but you've probably all heard by now, I just want to officially congratulate Belleville West High School. It's the first time they brought a number-one, first-place state basketball to four A to Belleville. And it was an exciting weekend and I was very happy to go. You'd have been, I was, I went, we went to the game, my wife and I, in Peoria Saturday. And I was extremely proud of the way that young men represented Belleville. They played hard. They showed a lot of character. It was a very aggressive game by the Chicago team that won last year. And our young men really stood tall, played hard, and won in overtime. And they really, truly deserved. They represented Belleville well. So, I just shared that with you because it was fun watching them and it was great to see all the people from Belleville that were in Peoria for that game. We move on now to the approval of the minutes. I'd ask for a motion to approve the city council minutes from March fifth. Is that the one Jenny, we got?
Yes, Special Council.
Okay, let's do this one first. I'd ask for a motion to receive and file the March fifth meeting, regular meeting for 2018. Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Pusa. Any additions or corrections to that motion, to that meeting? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Now, on the next motion, I'm asking for a motion to approve the special city council meeting minutes of March fourteenth. We are asking that you note that City Treasurer Dean Hart was excused. We had him down as present. So, I'd ask now for a motion with that inclusion. Motion by Alderman Tyler, second by Alderman Pusa, to accept, receive, and file those special meetings, minutes, and understanding that Dean Hart was excused. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. We'll go to claims, payroll, and dispersments. We have a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of one million, three hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and six dollars and thirty-six cents, and the payroll in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and four cents. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman Steele, second by Alderman Wigginton, to pay the claims and the payroll. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. Oral reports. Finance Committee, Alderman Consilla.
Your Honor, I'd like to read numbers eleven A, one, two, three, and four separately, each individually, and then maybe we can do five through eight together later.
Okay, we'll start out, why don't we do, why don't we do one, first of all, if we can? I think we could do that one separate.
Okay. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve the insurance renewals as follows. Insurance Program Managers Group, IMP, IPMG, as health insurance third-party administrators, including their recommendations for stop-loss and aggregate carriers, and Advantica for dental and vision coverage locked in for two years. Also approving staff's recommendation for plan changes.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pusa. Do I have any discussion? Yes, sir?
I won't be voting on this because I'm on the insurance, but I know a lot of employees are kind of confused exactly how it's going to work as far as deductibles copay. Is there any way that there could be some kind of meeting for city employees to explain a lot of this stuff?
Jamie? We'll be happy to. We had the insurance meeting and I think there was only one group that didn't make it. But we'll be happy to, we'll be happy to do that. Okay? That's not a problem. So, we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any other questions from the council about the, this motion?
I just have one question, Your Honor. Why does insurance fall under finance and not human resources?
It's, it has, it has financial impact and it's probably because it's also been done that way for years. It's been falling under finance before, twenty years ago, the city had a human resource department. And it's just, unfortunately, that's probably a good question. We could, we could debate that question. It's never been raised before. But it is, has financial implications because we are self-funded and it greatly is of impact on our, on our financial situation.
It's by ordinance as well.
It's by ordinance as well.
Something I think, if my recollection serves me correctly, I think up until a few years ago, it fell under the responsibilities of the city clerk and it was moved to the Director of Finance, I believe.
Yeah, I think that is correct.
Was that something else?
No, that was payroll.
That was payroll. That was payroll. But the finance.
But it's listed in the ordinance as a function of the Finance Director. So, it would.
The budgetary in finance, huh? Alrighty. So, we have a motion and we have a second from Finance Committee. Reference eleven A one. Any other questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Abstain.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Abstain.
Motion carries. We move now to the eleven A two, Alderman Consilla.
On behalf of the Finance Committee, I make a motion to approve Chris Brothers for the downtown parking lot improvement.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Gah. Any discussions on this item? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Gentlemen.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wigginton.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, we go to motion eleven A three. And I think, just for a second, Jamie, I'm going to ask you, there was a few things said, I think, I just want to make sure there's not some misclarification. I'm going to ask you if you would address a couple of the things. Alderman, you should have all received. And I think there's some on the back, if some of you in the audience didn't see this, but this is a revised change proposal, Second Compromise, we titled it, on three fifteen. And if you, if you still want one to follow along. But I want her to clarify a few of the things in here and a couple of things that might have been said that we need to, need to address.
Right. First of all, the Second Compromise proposal that came out, I think it was early Friday or late Thursday, was the, the mayor and I and other city staff sitting down and really trying to take to heart what a lot of the bar owners and restaurants were saying. With that in mind, though, compromise is both sides giving a little, not just one side giving all. We looked at the increases and we did, we did agree that putting it all on them right away in April was a bit much, so we tried to spread that increase over the two years. The gaming also, as opposed to going up to the three hundred dollars, is going up to the two fifty by the end of that second year, which by what Mr. Gregory handed out the other day is very much right on with state average for cities our size that are home rule. It's actually the low end of cities our size that are home rule. Liquor licenses, we did hear what the owners were saying when they talked about the Class C establishments. We did go back and study that. And that's why we're proposing those go to two fifty as opposed to the other ones at a hundred the first year and fifty the second year. So, we did try to even it out, or spread it out, I should say, over the two years and still keeping with getting the revenue that we needed to between all the sources. There was some misinformation given out on a proposal from another entity and I emailed all of you about that today. It was proposing some increases to Class C that the revenues didn't work out the way they were, the way they were stating. So, I noted that in the email to you guys today, so. If there's any other questions.
Okay, let's go ahead and do this, first of all, to make it official. Alderman Consilla, would you like to take this first one, please, and put, ask for a motion?
On behalf of Finance Committee, I move to approve the video game terminal stickers, proposed fee of two hundred dollars for terminal beginning April 2018 and two hundred and fifty dollars for terminal beginning April 2019.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Steele. Okay, now we have the motion on the floor. Alderman Wigginton, did you want to speak?
Actually, and I don't know if this fits into where we are right now, but you brought up about there were some proposals, some misinformation, some numbers, and maybe, or that way, the councils are reiterating. But for the people that are out here listening, would you be so kind and could you spell out what those proposals were and how they may not be correct numbers?
Sure. So, the proposal that was emailed late last week, if you look at it, number three said, "Class C retail liquor and package licenses, which are currently five fifty at the base rate or eight hundred if they're open till 2:00 AM. Increase all to at least a thousand dollars, which would bring in thirty-eight thousand dollars." If they are increased to a thousand dollars, that will not bring incremental new revenue of thirty-eight thousand dollars because they're already charged either five fifty or eight hundred. So, if we're increasing that base fee on all of them to a thousand dollars, that would bring instead seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars. If instead, they were increased by a thousand dollars, which would bring the thirty-eight thousand dollars of revenue, those liquor licenses would be almost three times the rate of the Class A and B.
I think that one of the questions that came to me over the weekend was, and you remember, our first proposal that came from the administration was to just have an increase the first time in ten years of a hundred and fifty dollars on a liquor license. The reason we were listening, because people said that they thought it was going to be an awful lot of money to pay the increased sticker fee and the liquor license, everything due in this month of April, just thirty days from now. So, that's when we proposed that, since our, our stickers are due this next, in month of April 2018, but they're for the May, they're for the next fiscal year. But next April is still the last month in this new fiscal year. So, we thought by splitting the fee up a little bit and making the So we thought by splitting the fee up a little bit and making the rest of it due the other part of the increase next April, we thought we were listening to you by not having, you know, uh, um, having it all due at one time. So we were trying to be, you know, a little bit user-friendly, because I do understand that if you got five machines, and we go up two hundred dollars as originally proposed, that would be a thousand dollar increase next month. But if we increased it one hundred, and then after listening and looking and studying, we cut the sticker down to two fifty from the proposed three hundred. So we said we would break, make that due next April. You know, we, we thought that was a fair way of listening to not have everything due at one time. Um, we did hear you about the new owners, the new potential licensee, and we took it from the original two fifty of the application to seven fifty, and we thought that was, uh, another step to show in good faith we were listening. Um, we did explain, I think we got it, I think, uh, Alder, I mean, um, Garrett Harner, our attorney, explained, and so did, uh, Jamie, that the terminal fee that we've never charged a terminal license before, because we are home rule, they must pay it, right, Garrett? They, they, they're responsible to pay it. You don't have to share that.
Correct. The shared expenses for the state fees.
The shared expenses for the state fees. So that was a clarification, uh, that the law says. Um, so what we tried to do is show that the scenario wasn't quite as bad as it was painted the first meeting. Now, we've had two meetings where we've had a good dialogue, we've listened, but let's be honest, as, to the council I speak, our twenty-eight point one million dollar budget for general fund, we told you over and over, and some of you are relatively new, but sixty percent of that is police and fire. Yes, we are giving three percent raises this year to the, several of the unions, the, the unions across the board, uh, because there's been a lot of patience and a lot of cooperation in the last number of years, whether some of them took a zero once or twice, two percent was probably the average raise for quite a few years. But in spite of all that, we're only increasing our budget by less than one percent. So when there was comments made that we need to learn how to cut, we have been cutting significantly, and we have been tightening our, tightening our belts significantly, and, and I'm very proud of what the department heads. And when these, these suggestions came with these proposed fees, we just didn't pick these one or two of us out at random, we talked to our staff, and we get their input, the professionals who deal with it, the police chief, and all of us sat down and went over this. So I, I just want you to know that we're listening, we take it ver, and the other, keep in mind, we hadn't raised the terminal sticker fees in the five years you've had gaming, we started out a hundred dollars, some cities, and I know it maybe is extreme, some started out as a thousand dollars per sticker. We started out as a hundred, and we haven't raised a liquor license in at least ten years. So I, I think we're, and we, and we've proven by this recommendation that's here tonight that we are raising C licenses more, and I would tell you, as long as I'm mayor, we will continue to study that. The other thing in this one paragraph I wanted to highlight, we do agree, uh, somebody brought it up here, we are gonna look into the check cashing. Uh, Garrett and I talked a little bit about it today, we're gonna do some research, that was a very valid point, that I wasn't aware, if what you're telling me is true, that it's as much going on as, as it is, and we need to look at that. And then lastly, the other thing is, we're gonna, we are gonna look at all business licenses, and we told you that, but it's gonna take a little bit of time, because we can't just raise fees to raise fees. And, and liquor is truly, there's a lot involved with, a lot of different departments involved with liquor, a lot of regulations we have to hold, we do, we are obligated to hold, um, compliance checks. We do have a responsibility to keep your files in the office to be one hundred percent accurate with the state of Illinois. And it is definitely, and we can prove it, in some cases, some days, quite a few police calls to a lot of people who do hold a liquor license. So there is regulation, and there, there is a need for these services. So Alderman, I, yes, sir, Alderman Elmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you covered a lot of information there, thank you very much. Uh, to the mayor and the other Aldermen, uh, the motion on the floor, and I think it's great that we're doing these one at a time, is, uh, specifically on the terminal stickers, and going from two hundred, uh, from one hundred to two hundred and two fifty in April of nineteen, and that's what I, I'm gonna speak of in just a second. I am optimistic, as I think most of us are, that there's going to be, uh, concerted effort for a business license program coming. I'm also optimistic that it can happen by the halfway point of the fiscal year, which means that it maybe if it's, if it is a hundred dollars, it would be rolled out in October, I would think that we can get that talked about by October, that maybe we would be rolling it out at a fifty dow, fifty percent, uh, rate, which would be a great introduction to get people used to it. And there's, through all these meetings, we've had some great back and forth, not just amongst the bar owners, but amongst ourselves, which I think has been fabulous. Therefore, I would like to make an amendment to Alderman Consilla's motion, that the motion to approve the video games terminal stickers from one hundred to two hundred, terminal beginning April of two thousand eighteen, period. And with the hope of the business license, with the hope of increased revenue amongst other businesses, that we can deal with April of two thousand nineteen, just like we deal with most other issues, uh, when it comes closer to April of two thousand nineteen. I'm not saying that it won't happen, but I'm just saying, I just don't believe that with the proposal that I think is going to come down the road of increased revenue from other sources other than the bars, that, uh, we need to hang that on them for April of two thousand nineteen. And let's just leave it right here for now, see if we can get this business license program started. Uh, I know it's not a replacement, it's not, it really, they really don't, shouldn't relate to each other, but it is what it is, and, uh, hopefully it gets started within six months. And, uh, so, that is my amendment, I'm gonna make the amendment official at this point, and just say that, uh, the motion ends at beginning of April.
We have a proposed amendment, is there a second for the proposed amendment? Second by Alderman Hazel. And this, let me throw one thing in here, I feel obligated to tell you. We need to bring forth a budget that's balanced, 'cause as we explained to you, you know, we, we saw a reduction this year in our bond rating. And we need to make sure, now, there's nothing saying that if we get this all done, and I think we can too, I agree with you, and there could be a couple of things that could be adjusted in, in a few months' time, there's nothing saying we can't repeal the second part of this amendment. But I'm just cautioning the council, or I'm asking on administrat, administration's behalf, on Jamie and I, and all those who've worked very diligently on the budget, that we would pass the proposed compromise tonight, the second compromise, so that we can start our fiscal year with a balanced budget, and so that we can make sure if, um, we're randomly looked at again, that we don't hurt ourselves with our bond rating, which would affect us even greater. Jamie, is that a true statement? And I think we have to be very cautious, so I think we can still go back and repeal...
I agree with what you're saying, I don't want to go into an unbalanced budget, that's why I'm dealing with just two thousand and eighteen, I'm not...
No, but don't, but this, this is part of, this is, this May, the second payment in May, next April, I'm sorry, the second payment in next April is still in this new fiscal year. So we need that to balance this budget.
I would hope, well, I, I don't wanna get into the business license.
Well, I, and I understand that that all can happen, but, and it needs to happen, but I'm just saying, we need to, we really need to get these letters out in the next day or two to the businesses, and we really need to be within, we're within le, almost thirty days, getting real close to thirty days of a new fiscal year, and we need to have, if we are checked and audited again, we need to have a balanced budget, and we need to have, need to have a positive cash flow, uh, in the black, at the end of April thirtieth of this year, so that our bond rating isn't, isn't become an issue that we don't want it to be. Alderman Wiggington.
I heard the word repealed, I just wanna make sure...
I don't know if that's the right word, excuse me, I thought about that. We can change that total price if we come up with another mechanism to replace it, okay?
That's the, that's exactly where I'm going in, so in other words, we can still pass this as, this as proposed.
That's what I'm...
Depending on other research of, other avenues of, of revenue throughout the next fiscal year, when it gets to this, it could be amended, repealed, whatever the case might... Here's the, you know, we've had proposals, common proposals, compromises, I bet you everybody in this room has talked to Jamie several times, the mayor several times, himself, so to so forth, uh, you know, we're, we're not taking this lightly by stretch of imagination. But Jamie, I'm not so sure if the Finance Director in Southern Illinois has a proper handle on finances and budget, and, and can squeeze a penny in those where every, every cent is going in this city. Um, you have to understand, we're not, we're not just raising these, just be raising them, we have to have a balanced budget, like you said, to, to keep our bond rating, but I have such incredible faith in Jamie, that she has got a handle on every aspect of the total finances of this city. Somewhere along the line, we have to put our faith in our Finance Director, who I think is, eats and sleeps numbers, um, you know, we, we've gotta have faith in her. And, you know, we're down to the final hour now, there's, there's, you know, I, I don't see whether it could be much more compromise or common proposals, would like to say when we're this close to the final hour. So with respect, you know, to my good friend Phil Elmore, personally, I think it should stay in the way it is, and when we go to the next fiscal year, let's work hard to find other avenues, then if we have the ability to repeal it, we'll repeal it.
I think I've told you...
If we have the ability.
I think I've told the council, and I've told the people in this room, and I think I proved, yeah, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, we, maybe we should've started these meetings a little earlier, but we've had a finance meeting, a special council meeting, and we've listened at a couple of other meetings about this topic. We have not ran this through without listening, and we have compromised on at least two occasions proposed, it's not, wrote it on yet. But we do, as Alderman Wiggington said, we do need to get this passed, but I'm, I'm very committed to continuing quickly to research and come back to this council with your suggestions, blend it in with staff's suggestions about business licenses and how we can do it, so that it's appropriate and stands up. I'm very, uh, I'm very serious about investigating more, the check cashing, and I, I don't disagree as a few of you come to me, there are some other things that we probably need to be looking at in far as, you know, down the road. But the last thing I wanted to do was to have a complete laundry list of every fee under the sun with the city, and then be accused of just going down A to Z. We, we looked at, quite honestly, this, the liquor fees hadn't been increased in ten years, and, and truly felt that that was, you know, one that we probably, um, needed to look at. We just, we did increase trash fees last year, if you remember, in the summer, because we hadn't done them, and Jamie, what was it, eight, eight years? But we had sustained a number of dumping fee increases at the landfill, so we had to. And, you know...
Your Honor, I feel like, um, the people are the pioneers in this, because we are going to be looking into other business, business licenses. It just so happens that this is first, we haven't had time to get into the others. I totally agree with Roger, Jamie's budget is just right down to the penny.
Alderman Ovian.
This whole thing bothers me, because instead of being proactive, it becomes reactive. And I think we're gonna have to rescind this come October, like Alderman Elmore said, because we now know that we can go ahead and pass a business license. A business license payers to fire inspections. There's not any business in this town that does not receive a fire inspection. If they do, they shouldn't be in business.
We pay for them.
So if we pass a budget tonight to exclude what you want, I'm saying come October, we should get back.
And Alderman Ovian, this is what we've talked about, and you've heard me say it, that we are investigating, but we have to, we have to investigate it in a way that it becomes totally legal and, and that we're doing the right thing. I believe Alderman Bitner was next, and then you.
You know, we had three very good meetings, and for the three meetings, we've had these small business owners come in here and say, tonight, we heard, he had to lower his prices for the third time, a dollar fifty for a bottle of beer. These guys are not making a lot of money. And Mayor, you said it tonight, we're balancing this budget tonight on these fees, that's how we're balancing our budget. I don't know why we have to, we're, we're singling out a certain segment of this, you know, and like I said, these are all the guys, these are our small business owners, these are the guys who've been here for a long time. I don't think it's fair. Now, if we're gonna stop, and I, and this is the first I've heard, besides Jamie's memo today about the, uh, our, our fee, our, um, bond rating, if we don't have a balanced budget, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt our bal, our, our, wait, our bond rating. I just have a real problem with this. If you guys, you know, the council members, you heard that these guys would come in here for, you know, almost four hours worth of testimony telling you how this is really gonna hurt them, how many of these guys might go out of business? So now, I guess we're talking less than sixty thousand dollars now, 'cause we're making all the compromises, we're cutting back, or are, are we still gonna get sixty thousand dollars on the rate?
Still right there, right, Jamie? Even with the adjustments that we proposed in the second compromise, we're within about two thousand dollars, so we, yeah, we're still right where we need to be. Now, but, but once again, Alderman Bitner, we have talked about this bond rating thing, and we can prove it in minutes numerous times, uh, in, in the last six months to a year. We, we've been, we've had this discussion in finance and in this meeting and others. So that I know is a fact, and you've been probably sent other memos, et cetera. The ra, rating report was sent to everybody, whether you read it or not, I don't know, but...
I read it.
But, but my point is, we didn't hide that from anybody, and that's a fact. But, um, we're, we didn't, my point again is, of a twenty-eight point one million dollar budget, our total amount of fee increases was what, a hundred and, a hundred and eighty thousand, which is probably what, about one percent? Less than one percent. So we're not trying to balance this, but after ten years of no increase with some of these fees, and I, I repeat, we passed an ordinance that, that stopped the gaming parlors from coming to Bellville, and I made a statement then, that that was because we felt that I felt, and many of us felt, you all felt, 'cause that passed pretty healthy, I think, almost unanimously, that we wanted to support our mom and pop businesses and our brick-and-mortar businesses, and not have somebody just come in to a little strip center and, and try to make more off of gaming than they do off of food or beverage. We stopped that, and because we're home rule, we can do it, and we did do that. And if some of you remember, a few of us are still here, that stood with you, and we, we concurred, we took it to the public for a vote, but I talked to a lot of people, telling people, I thought the gaming was not gonna hurt the city, I thought it was a good thing, I voted for it myself, my family voted for it, and, and we got it passed. And I feel like many of you know that we worked with you. So we're not against this, and I, and I'm really proud of some of you who have truly used the gaming money to make some improvements, and it's very noticeable, and thank you. Uh, but it's, it's a business here, we do have to make sure, uh, we can, we can cover the part, the expenses. Alderman Wiggington?
I have several things. Number one, you said the word committed, uh, which is incredibly important to this council moving forward into the next fiscal year, looking at other avenues of, of, uh, revenue sources. Uh, talking about the, uh, business licenses, it's chair of ordinance and legal, we're working on an item now that we've been working on for three months, and our city attorney has done an incredible amount of research. There's just some things you cannot wave a magic wand and pass willy-nilly. Um, we've got four points, we handed to the city attorney at our last ordinance and legal meeting on this matter, he's researching it, we hope he will have, will pound this out. But everybody would love this, but it's gotta be legal.
I agree.
That's the whole factor, that lawsuits we don't need. And Mr. Harner, if, if there's a way where we can do some of these things... That's the whole factor, that lawsuits we don't need. And Mr. Harner, if, if there's a way where we can do some of these things and do it under the law, we'll do it. But when you talk about small business, let me tell you, for forty-two years, I fought to stay in business. I fought the outlet malls that keep coming to town, the big box stores, the, the malls, the Macy's and Billards. And you know what? Now I'm fighting Amazon. Now, one thing about the video gaming machine and the bar owners, Amazon's not gonna affect them one way, shape, or form. It's killing my freaking business. Let me tell you that right now, friends, gentlemen in the country. But, so, you know, when you're talking about, um, if you go into business for yourself, it's a gamble, any way, shape. It's a labor of love. You know, there's days when I wish I was heading to film with Josh selling insurance. Uh, you know, I, I mean, there's, there's days I think, you know, what am, what am I doing in this, in this business? And it, it, it's not easy. There, no small business is easy, I don't care what it is. Gentlemen talk about lowering his prices. Well, you know, you ought to be in a business like mine, where I'm fighting the big box stores and major malls and Amazon, and I'm trying to squeak a cent out of every purchase that I, that I sell, every item that I sell. So, you know, this is a reality situation. You wanna be in business, you wanna be a, a small business, you wanna be an entrepreneur, which I'm all for. It's the backbone of this city, it's the backbone of this country, still a small business. It ain't freaking easy. That's just the way it is. And I mean to tell you, there's nobody can paint a, a bigger picture after running a business for forty-two years than I can.
Yes, sir, Alderman Elmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, listened to a lot here, and it's not so much that fees need to be increased, but how we arrive at the figures, they will go up. You know, on one hand, I hear we haven't raised fees in ten years, and I think, why not? I don't know how the price of any good or services stays the same for ten years. I'm told the cost of regulating licenses has increased, and I suppose they have, but I'm not shown a process for evaluating what those costs are. One thing to say, we're not doing this to cover the budget shortfall, but for the lack of process in place to show evidence otherwise, the fact remains, we're going to depend on these fee increases to do just that. We need to be able to evaluate the process and the costs involved of issuing and maintaining licenses to see if the fees are fair for all parties involved. I'm not satisfied that we've done all we need to do here. I'd like to see a formal process in place that will evaluate where we are and how we'll maintain pace with future cost increases from one year to the next. And institute minimally a biannual schedule for dealing with the issue instead of offering one hundred percent or more increases on an industry which has historically been used as a whipping boy for taxes and fees dating back to the whiskey rebellion of seventeen ninety-one.
I wasn't here then. And, and Alderman Randall, let me just say this, please. We have welcomed, Jamie and I sent out the insurance that this, this, this financial, uh, budget, how many, how long ago now, six, eight weeks? Six, five, how long they had the budget, over a month? Okay. But we have welcomed, and we always welcome, if somebody has proposals from this council, we would gladly welcome to look at this. Um, and, and, and this is year after year. We, we would, you know, I, I don't disagree. It's just unfortunately, and I'll, I'll say this again. Unfortunately, we, we go from, we, it's unfortunate. I wish we had more time and staff so that we could spend more time researching and doing things. But we are, we are short-staffed, and we are living from event to event trying to get everything ready, uh, to handle city business that's mandated at the moment. And, and that's what happens when you, when you are down to the wire and you don't have all the people and you can't do the preparation, planning, and research that you would like to do. And I don't disagree with that. I would love to have a lot more time to spend on holding, uh, uh, sessions and, and getting, uh, business input or having, but we are just absolutely eight to ten meetings a day and then functions at night, and there's, it's not the time that I would like to have. And I don't have a lot of support staff that I can delegate any more than what these department heads, many of them get here early than I do each day. And I'm here pretty early, and I stay pretty late. Any other questions? We, we, we have a motion right now on the floor for a, a, um, motion to amend. Uh, and we have a second for that. So we'd be voting first, the first vote's gonna be, I'm gonna call for the vote on the amendment. A yes would mean that we would amend it and, and only have the initial fee this year and nothing in nineteen. So it will not have the full amount that Jamie feels that we need and I feel that we need for this year's budget. Um, so we need to vote on that first. So I, everybody understand the motion. If you vote yes, you're voting for the amendment. Correct, Mr. Harner?
Correct.
Okay, so roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Ten noes?
Yep.
Ten noes, so the, 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 uh, it's, it's defeated. Okay, um, at this time now, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to ask for the motion as read by Alderman, uh, Consilla from Finance, uh, that we have motioned to approve video gaming terminal stickers, proposed fee of two hundred dollars, beginning April two thousand eighteen. And it would go up to two twenty-five when the sticker would become due, two fifty, two hundred and fifty dollars, when it would become due again in April of two thousand nineteen. Being, uh, uh, total would be the two hundred and fifty dollar fee then at that time. So everybody understands the motion. We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
What do you got this time, Mayor? Hang on. Eight to eight, and as the chair, I get a chance to vote, and I will vote, uh, to approve this. Yes, aye. So the ayes would then have it, right?
Correct.
We all go on to the next motion, Alderman Consilla.
Motion to approve video gaming terminal operators, proposed five hundred dollars per rotation, solely to internal operators.
We have a motion by Alderman Consilla. Do I hear a second by Alderman Schaefer on that motion? Or is there discussion on this particular motion? Roll call.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Second was Schaefer.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Fifteen to one, that motion passes. We go on now, Alderman Consilla, to, uh, the eleven A five, correct?
Yes.
Let's just keep going separate, we're, keep going separate.
Um, eleven A five, a motion to approve liquor license increases for class A and B base fee by one hundred dollars annually, beginning two thousand eighteen. And fifty dollars annually, beginning April two thousand nineteen. Annually means through that year. It does not mean it's going to go up by fifty dollars a year thereafter.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Consilla. Do I hear a second, uh, on that motion? Alderman Wiggington, is there any discussion that we haven't covered on this?
Point of clarification, Mayor, the difference between class A and B and C licenses.
It's listed in the ordinance. C is your package liquor and grocery store, A and B's restaurant and bars. And there's, there is a clar, there's a clarification in there. The one, you're allowed to sell it, um, like a bottle of wine, you can sell it at a, a restaurant if somebody wants to take one. So there's, it's, it's spelled out in the ordinance, and I didn't bring the whole ordinance with me.
It's in the attachment.
It's in the attachment. Of the amendment, okay? If you look at your attachment there. But, um, this is something that I would turn to Erin, and she would spit right out, because she deals with it every day, though, as a deputy. So we have a motion and we have a second pertaining to the liquor license proposed increase for class A and B. Um, a hundred dollars increase for April of two thousand eighteen, and then the additional fifty would be added on in April of nineteen. Uh, but the total for this fiscal year coming up would be a hundred and fifty dollar increase, period. Everybody understand the debt, that, the, what's spelled out? Roll, yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying. The wording with annually, I mean, that just, it just sounds like it will go up. Is that the correct wording legally?
The, for the proposed ordinance that would implement this motion, if it, if it is approved, is explicitly says that it's an increase of six hundred and fifty dollars, provided however, that sh, that fee, uh, shall increase to seven hundred dollars effective April first, uh, two thousand nineteen. So it does clarify it.
It'll clarify it, as, in his language of the ordinance, okay?
And, and utilize as a total number.
Everybody get that? So we have a motion, we have a second. We're down to eleven A five, the actual increase in the liquor license fees. Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington? Barfield?
Aye.
What do you got this time?
Eleven to five.
That's what I got. Motion passes eleven to five. Alderman Consilla.
Eleven A six, motion to approve liquor license increase for class C base fee by two hundred and fifty dollars annually, beginning April two thousand eighteen.
Motion by Alderman Consilla, second by Alderman Pusa. Discussion on, or any clarification on this motion. Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer? Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. You got this time?
Twelve to four.
Twelve to four this time. So we go now, Alderman Consilla, we go now to, uh.
Eleven A seven?
Yes.
A motion to approve liquor license application fee change from two hundred and fifty to seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Pusa. Do I hear any discussion on this one? Roll, yes, sir.
Mayor, that's for, um.
For a new applicant.
For new?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. For somebody's getting a new, new license, okay? All right, roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Twelve to four.
Motion passes twelve to four. We go on to the last one under this one. Alderman Consilla, eleven A eight.
Motion to approve a special event liquor license fee change from ten dollars to twenty dollars per event.
Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Elmore. Do I hear discussion on this one?
What was the reasoning behind only going to twenty dollars? I mean, the point has been made.
Because these are a lot of church groups and a lot of, uh, fraternal, isn't that correct, Jenny? Uh, that, and, and.
These are sales, I mean, they're selling beer, right?
It's a one-time event.
It's a one-time, it's usually good for, it's usually, well, in fact, I'm not mistaken, I think it's.
Is it guaranteed twenty-four hour period?
A twelve-hour.
But, but it can't be more than three or something like that.
Three in a year.
Three in a year. So it's a very limited license, basic.
Some move downtown.
And, and the bars downtown have to get it also.
They have to get it. And then they have, then they have to also go and get a state license.
If they serve outside.
A state special permit, special use, which I think somebody in here can probably tell me it's more. Correct? Huh?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five for that, okay.
And we do require ram shop improvement.
They have to have ram shop, and so, so, so.
So we do require insurance.
No, we have to. So, so anyway, that, that clarified that question. So we have a motion and second on eleven A eight. There's no further question. You second it, yes?
Yeah, no, Phil El, Alderman Elmore.
Alderman Elmore, I'm sorry. Elmore seconded this one. If there's no further questions by the council, roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
That one passed.
Fifteen to one.
Fifteen to one. Okay, we flip the page to three, and we go to the Planning Commission. I believe that's Alderman Dittman.
On behalf of the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of a site plan, landscaping plan, architectural additions for convenience stores, gas station, and a car wash at twenty-two thirty-five West State Route one sixty-one, at the intersection of Holden Road and State Route one sixty-one. On five point four six acre, C two heavy commercial district zone parcel. The Planning Commission recommended approval with the stipulation that the site plan be amended to show pardon for the trucks on the site.
Motion by Alderman Dittman, second by Alderman Schaefer. Do we hear discussion on this proposal coming from Planning Commission? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington? Barfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Dittman.
On eleven B two, Garden Home, Sonoma Group.
Is there a problem if we do those two together?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Okay. We'd like to have consideration of preliminary platform subdivision of a point nine acre B one multi-family residence district zone parcel located at seven zero zero nine West Main Street, into eight lots. Planning Commission recommended approval with the stipulation that the boundary measurements of the lots be more clearly delineated. Eleven B three, Garden Home, Sonoma Group, consideration of the site plan, final plan, and improvement plan for the development subdivision of a point nine acre B one multi-family residence district zone parcel located at seven zero zero nine West Main Street, into eight lots containing eight multiple family residential units. Planning Commission recommended approval contingent with the stipulation that the developer collaborate with the staff recording location of utilities in the area to ensure proper sanitation and other municipal services.
We have a motion by Alderman Dittman, second by Alderman Schaefer, for these two items coming from the Planning Commission, reference the Sonoma Group. Any questions? Roll call.
Hazel?
Aye.
Consilla?
Aye.
Pusa?
Aye.
Bittner?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Schaefer?
Aye.
Dillman?
Aye.
Ga?
Aye.
Steele?
Aye.
Wygott?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wiggington?
Aye.
Barfield?
Aye.
Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steel.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries, uh, the motion's from planning, that is. This time we flip the page to page four. We have two motions that are being recommended by the park board. Do I hear somebody willing to, uh, make those motions? Alderman Dittelman, would you care to? I can read them if you, you wanna read them? Go ahead. Huh? You're on a roll, good. I like that.
Can we, please, can we say, say this?
Go ahead. No, really, I, I don't, anybody have a problem with reading these together?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Eleven C one, motion to approve a bid from Parkware in the amount of ten thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty cents for the George Bellville T-shirts. Parkware approved bid. Eleven C two, motion to approve destruction of a wooden concession slash storage building approximately sixty-two foot by twenty-four foot as the J.C. fund funded by a hundred and seven thousand dollar grant from Saint Clair County Grants Commission to the Bellville J.C., uh, Development Corporation upon completing, completion, the structure to be dedicated to the city. Parkware approved request.
Do I hear a second to these motions? Alderman, uh, Elmore seconded. Two motions that are coming from the park board's recommendation. Any discussion or questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steel.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
That one passed.
Fifteen to one.
Fifteen to one. Okay, we flip the page to three and we go to the planning commission, I believe that's Alderman Dittelman.
On behalf of the planning commission, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of a site plan, landscaping plan, architectural additions for convenience stores, gas station, and a car wash at twenty-two thirty-five West State Route one sixty-one at the intersection of Holden Road and State Route one sixty-one on five point four-six acre C two heavy commercial district zone parking. The planning commission recommended approval with the situation that the boundary measurements of the lots be more clearly delineated. Eleven B three, Garden Home Sonoma Group, consideration of the site plan, final plat, and improvement plans for the development subdivision of a point-nine acre B one multi-family residence district zone parking located at seven zero zero nine West Main Street into eight lots. Planning commission recommended approval with the situation that the boundary measurements of the lots be more clearly delineated. Eleven B three, Garden Home Sonoma Group, consideration of the site plan, final plat, and improvement plans for the development subdivision of a point-nine acre B one multi-family residence district zone parking located at seven zero zero nine West Main Street into eight lots containing eight multiple family residential units. Planning commission recommended approval contingent with the stipulation that the developer collaborate with the staff recording location of utilities in the area to ensure proper sanitation and other municipal services.
We have a motion by Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Shaffer, for these two items coming from the planning commission, reference the Sonoma Group. Any questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steel.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Dittelman.
On eleven B two, Garden Home Sonoma Group.
Is there a problem if we do those two together?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to have consideration of preliminary plat for the subdivision of a point-nine acre B one multi-family residence district zone parking located at seven zero zero nine West Main Street into eight lots containing eight multiple family residential units. Planning commission recommended approval with the situation that the boundary measurements of the lots be more clearly delineated. Eleven B three, Garden Home Sonoma Group, consideration of the site plan, final plat, and improvement plans for the development subdivision of a point-nine acre B one multi-family residence district zone parking located at seven zero zero nine West Main Street into eight lots containing eight multiple family residential units. Planning commission recommended approval contingent with the stipulation that the developer collaborate with the staff recording location of utilities in the area to ensure proper sanitation and other municipal services.
We have a motion by Alderman Dittelman, second by Alderman Shaffer, for these two items coming from the planning commission, reference the Sonoma Group. Any questions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Shaffer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steel.
Aye.
Wygott.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Aye.
Motion carries, Alderman Dittelman.
On eleven B two, Garden Home Sonoma Group.
Is there a problem if we do those two together?
No, no, no.
Okay. Clarification, Your Honor, about, uh, what this ordinance specifically deals with?
This deals with the, uh, fee increases that were approved by motion at the last meeting.
Which was?
It was for the increases for the business licenses that were twenty-five dollars go to fifty. The, um, inspections go up five dollars. This was the toters. This was, so, uh, occupancy permits are-
Went up five dollars.
Went up five dollars.
Inspections went up five dollars.
Inspections went up five dollars.
And there was something else, Jamie, what was that, one of the things?
My, large item pickup.
Large item pickup went up. That all refreshed now?
That was the one, March fifth was when that was voted on.
It passed, it passed here-
We have a separate, um, attachment in our package.
Right.
Correct, correct.
No, it's in there, it's in there.
It was just one ordinance at the time of March fifth, so we couldn't vote on the ordinance.
So we had to do that one separate at the time, because we didn't know what tonight was gonna bring. So we wanted to make sure that was moved forward. Um, we have a motion, we have a second. I think we have clarification? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Bitner.
No.
Randall.
No.